Okay. I'd like to call this meeting of the Village Planning Board at 6:32 on November 17th. And checking quorum, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, we have quorum with six here. Who is missing?
We're missing Kent. Oh, yeah. I have not heard from Kent, so hopefully he will join us.
Who?
Kent.
Oh, okay. All right. Kent, okay.
Oh, there he is.
There he is. Was, is, okay, there he is. So we have a full quorum. First, next on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. And let me start. I was handed a note that we need with two items. Under Items of Discussion, number one, discussion of Marvin Gardens welcome signage. We need to table that until next month because Marvin Gardens has not gotten information in.
We can table that when we get to the item because I would like to at least describe it.
All right, well, do you want to leave it on then? Rowhead?
Yeah, I would like to, I would ask if you could leave it on the agenda just so we can, again, have a couple of sentences about it.
Okay.
And then table it.
All right, I'm okay with that then. So we will leave it on the agenda.
But the other thing that just came up today, I would like to keep it out.
The add to the agenda, discussion of the Union County 2050 Comprehensive Plan. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And I guess that's assuming is how it relates to us?
Yes, and there's an invitation for you all to attend like a Q and A session, so I'll be talking about that.
Okay, so shall we add that as number eight? Or?
You can put it in.
I tell you what, it may make more sense. What do you think? Add it between three and four after the update on the 2020, our 2020 Land Use Plan?
That's fine. And it doesn't quite matter to me where it gets added.
It may just at least, you know, I'm looking at the other items.
Oh, yeah, it'll be relevant, yeah.
Yeah, it's a little more relevant right there.
So it's just after the land use plan?
Yeah, so that will be the new number four.
Okay.
And then everything else moves down one.
Can we put that in a minute?
Any other comments by anybody?
John, I have one or two. Number five, the discussion of the proposed inputs to the DFI memo. Was there information included in the package or is that just an item that we are going to discuss? I didn't see anything in the package on that.
Well, let me check real quick. I definitely created a memo and put it in the packet. Yeah, it is, yeah, it's on, if you have a PDF of it open, it's right after the land use plan. It's going to be like pages 52 and 53 of the packet.
Okay. Let me go there real quick.
Yeah, the subject is recap of the previous MHDSP committee meeting and discussion of proposed inputs to the FIMO.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I see.
And on the next page, there's a table with the three scenarios that I proposed to present, some adjustments, but there it is.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any other comments?
Yeah, Melinda said there wasn't a part in the package that's really important part of the meeting.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. Okay.
Just another point for me, John. I will have to, I will have to leave the meeting for a little bit. I'm not sure how long at 8 o'clock, just to let everybody know that I'm going to go off screen and mute it at 8 o'clock.
Okay.
All right.
Just let us know when it happens.
Yeah, and we'll still, we'll still.
I have to, I have to be on another call at 8. I just don't know how long that is.
No problem.
All right, so we'll still have quorum.
Even if you want to drop below quorum, you can keep going. You don't have to stop.
Oh, okay. Paul, were you just readjusting or raising a hand?
He's good, he's good.
All right, and I still. Austin, I'm not, I'm socially distanced from you.
You're fine.
Yeah, I'm fine.
No. I can't talk, I'm sorry. I don't know whether I sound as muted to everybody else as I sound to myself.
You're fine, John.
You're fine.
All right, okay. No other discussion?
Still need to make the motion.
I'll make the motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Need a second?
Need a second. Mark, all in favor? You know, except I can't see Melinda, but I assume you voted yes.
A non-voting automatic, yes.
Yeah, automatic.
There you go.
Okay.
That's a thumbs up. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, adoption of the meeting minutes for the 10/20/20 meeting. Everybody read those? Any comments or amendments? Kelly's squirreling her mouth. That's the advantage of sitting in front of this great big screen.
That's not fair, John.
That's the reason I come here.
I'm reading on a little Mac, so I'm just.
That's the reason I come here, so I can see all the faces. Anyway, hearing none, I would accept a motion to adopt.
That's presented.
Anybody?
Moving to adopt the meeting minutes. I'm sorry, the meeting minutes for 10/20/20?
All right.
I'll second.
All right. Michael and Kelly, all right, all in favor? All in favor? Thank you.
There you go, John. You can sign something.
Oh, okay. Public comment period. We have, I see one sign on, but I don't, or a couple of sign-ons now. Do we have any, we have no one here.
I have, no one, no one has signed up with me, no one has emailed me, so unless someone on the chat would like to speak, someone virtually would like to speak.
Anybody who would like to speak, unmute and make yourself known. Hearing none, I will close the public comment period. Moving to items of discussion. Number one, discussion of the Marvin Gardens welcome signage.
Okay, yeah, so as I, as I said before, this item needs to be tabled because they're not ready, but I did want to explain what this is and why it's on the agenda like this. Basically, Publix opened on October 21st, as most of you know, and they've got this great big brick facade type retain wall for the retention pond they had in front, and they thought it would be a great place to put some sort of welcome to Marvin signage since that's our northern border on that side of the town. But of course, since it's a conditional district, every sign was already pre-approved, and so any additional signs would need to come back through you guys. So they wanted to do some conceptual, and there's just like a pass-through to see what you guys would think about several proposals, again, which they're not ready to present, but that's what this item is about. And if there, you know, anyone has any questions on it, I'd like to answer them questions, but if not, I would like if one of you could make a motion to table this to next month.
Does anyone, or?
You actually don't need to motion for it, but.
Yeah, Mark raised the same, do you have, do you have a question?
I was just making the motion be requested.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Okay, great.
Does anyone have any, Paul, do you have a question?
I do. I was, I was wondering if there are any thoughts among the group here before we have those folks spend any money on something? If there's just pure objection to the idea of having this kind of, you probably want to at least discuss that.
Is it a welcome to Marvin?
Yeah.
Then, okay, so let's move on. But if there's an objection that you just haven't saw in here, you probably want to get that out of the way before they spend any money on it.
Well, yeah, that was my curio, yeah, I was going to at least ask if anybody had any thoughts, you know, in general, not necessarily about the sign, but a sign period. I guess assuming that it is, Rowhead, just, you know, not welcome to Marvin Publix or just welcome to Marvin, North Carolina kind of thing?
Yeah, that's what they were talking to me about before. They really wanted, I mean, obviously, there's plenty of Marvin Gardens signage around. They really wanted to embrace the idea of being in Marvin as well, being our only commercial site. And Publix has also been, you know, I've talked to a bunch of the staff and the managers at this point, and they're very excited to be a part of the community. So the way I'm hearing it is they really do want some like welcome to Marvin type of signage. It's just like a blank, it's like a big blank wall, and there's no, I mean, there was a thought to not, you know, and spacing the corner with a lot of visibility, so there was just a thought to do something.
Is this the wall that faces Newtown, right?
It's a great idea. I have, I think, I'd welcome to see what they have drawn up, and I think it's a, it's a great idea.
Yeah, that's sort of my thought is it sounds like they're, you know, it sounds like they're wanting to be a, a member of the community, you know, an integral member of the community, but, you know, and everybody but Paul are quote newbies to this board and weren't around when it was all approved originally. And I would still like to, you have the background more than the rest of us. Although, you know, everybody is new, both on the board and the council and everything else, but your thoughts on it?
I'd say this, it's not really related to my history of the project. It's more, my mind blew a little bit of a discomfort with the idea of letting a commercial enterprise sort of address our branding scenario, which we don't even have an understanding of just yet. It would literally be the only welcome to Marvin sign out there, and it wouldn't be a Marvin sign, you know what I'm trying to say? So I'm a little bit concerned about letting this sort of slip out of our hands in terms of, in terms of the branding. But I understand why that, that actually is a pretty nice location or sign. It just seems to make it a hundred and fifty, associated with the development of the community, but it sounds like that's counter to what they're trying to achieve. So it's my observations.
Yeah.
They really are trying to submit to you guys very preliminary. Like when they come to this meet, when they're thinking of coming to this meeting, when it comes to the next meeting, it's not to get your approval, it's to get your opinion. So maybe it's to that time that you see whether you like what they're putting up.
Is there a, we have a community, a committee that does, is working on branding, correct?
I don't think so.
Wasn't there a higher, like an agency?
I know that council's talked about it several times, but I don't know whether it's ever gone anywhere because.
Isn't that one of the proposed committees, one of the proposed boards committees that would develop in a couple of years?
Yeah, that's like next year though, so, and that's only for, that would only be for the district.
And I know, like I said, I know that, example, when they, when the council met at Firethorne that one time, you know, on a community meeting, I think I recall conversations about branding and stuff at that point in time, but, you know, so, yeah, sounds like a good idea, but it sort of fell on the floor maybe, you know, because of other more pressing items.
Well, I am aware that a company called Leaderboard Branding did appear in front of council and spoke to the subject of branding and gave just an overview of their thoughts. They, principles of that company live in Marvin, so I know they spoke in front of council some time ago, but I don't know where it's gone from there.
To my knowledge, it hasn't gone anywhere because we haven't heard anything about that.
Yeah, like I said, I don't recall anything since, you know, way back then. Like everything that we, you know, that sounds like a good idea, it's, it's not a, oh, let's do it and it's done, you know, it's, we study things a lot.
Yeah. Well, so that goes again to my concern a little bit, and that is that if the only welcome Marvin sign would be our development, commercial development, which incidentally is the only commercial development we have in the town, it just, it feels a little awkward to me, that's all.
My thought is that we have a commercial development in town. They want to put up a sign. I think if we went ahead and did all this to have one, you know, we should get some recognition. And my concern is that we would get in a situation where you let perfect become the enemy of good. Like can we go find a branding agency and figure out all the branding for every Marvin sign there before we do this? It just seems a little self-defeating to kind of stack up bureaucratic stuff. But I see your point, Paul. I don't disagree, but.
But it's hard to look at gift cards in the map, right?
Like I said, it's, we let perfection get in the way of good, you know?
Yeah, yeah, that's, you know, when they are evidently trying to, to be a good neighbor, you know, for lack of a better description, and participate, it's kind of hard to say, no, we don't want the help.
I mean, are they allowed to sign up on it even if we can't tell them what to do? Can we at least say, yeah?
It's more than that. You'll, you'll be the ones allowing whatever they present as its own approval.
Yeah, we kind of can tell them what to do, right? Because currently not allowed, so if you allow it, they have to get permission. And that means we actually get it. At that point, they confuse and say, well, no, we don't want to do that, then we just have.
We're deciding whether they should prepare a sign for us to say yes or no?
No, at this point, they're just coming as like a, kind of like a free application meeting just to get your opinions on their ideas.
I would move that we let them show us their ideas.
Do Melinda have a question?
Well, I think that that's an interesting point, and I, just as we're talking about branding and we're talking about a sign, I think with the new Heritage Center District 2, it may be worth giving it a little extra thought because, yes, it's only, it's one sign right now, but that doesn't mean that it's going to be a standalone concept of branding as we look to potentially hypothetically, allegedly, possibly expand just something so that we have some kind of continuity, right? So just a thought.
Kelly?
What is, what's the problem with just going back to them and saying, hey, we need to get our ducks in a row? Thank you for the offer. Could you put this on pause until we, you know, consult and then get back? And if they're willing to do it now, would they not be willing to do it in three or four months?
All right.
We're really in a rush on any of this.
Well, what's the harm of seeing what they present us?
Yeah, yeah, what, you know, either that or. Robert, you know, maybe you can chat with the council about an opinion or something that.
And I would say if we don't think we're going to allow them to do it, and they have to wait till we do our branding, redesign ours, and they can use ours, if that's known, then don't waste your money and your time.
This is, this is not something Zach has talked right now. They talked about branding briefly during the CIP last year, but it was not a high-ranking item.
It's not a high-ranking, and if we say, please wait until we, you know, get a plan, it's not going to happen. You know, it's just not, I bet five years from now, we don't have an active Marvin branding program. Just, just, you know, my feeling.
I mean, to me, this is, this is free advertising, and we should take advantage of it. They're willing to do it, we like it, and we should receive it.
I, you know, I think, you know, they're not asking us to vote on it or make recommendations. Let's just say that we're open to, to look at their presentation. How about that? Is that sort of what we need, Rowhead, right, right tonight?
Well, I think the motion on the table currently is to table this item until next month.
Yeah.
I want to bring up, should we actually even table it? Or should we just instruct me to tell them, don't do it at all?
And I just, I just wanted to take the pulse of the board here to see if there was going to be a reaction, a negative reaction. And it sounds like we're sort of split. There's something that's going, maybe we outweighed, something that's going, hey, let's, let's take free advertising. So it doesn't sound like there's a clear cut, hey, let's stop this. It's my view.
Yeah, I think that, you know, I would say that since it's not, you know, 7-0, that we're against the concept of the ideal, that we ought to at least listen to what they've got to offer.
Maybe we could be optimistic on this one and say that they're going to nail it out of the park. They're actually going to create our branding for us, and we can continue to use it going forward without paying for it. So Rowhead, can we, I will second the motion then that we, or provide a motion that we table it for our conversation, and you just convince them to spend a lot of money on it, make it really great, and help us brand Marvin?
Yeah, I think.
Is that a motion? Can we do all that?
You just seconded the motion, so the motion's up for a vote.
Okay, so we have a motion to table it until they, until next month and a second?
Yeah, and then we have a second as well, so.
Yeah, so all in favor? Okay. You know, boy, like everything else we do, we have to talk about it a bunch, I'm sorry. If I open the door.
Love you guys for that.
But it's constructive conversation.
Absolutely.
All right, item number two, discussion of the Weddington request revision to the annexation boundary, sphere of influence, and joint resolutions with municipalities in Union County to adopt ETJ. Boy, that's a mouthful, Rowhead. That's about three items, isn't it?
They're, they're related.
Yeah, that was, that, I mean, in a, in a way, that is three items, but as you see, Lisa Thompson from Weddington was supposed to join me for this conversation, but she had to cancel last second. But no matter, I'm just going to keep it simple and see if I can share my screen to quickly describe some of the revisions. We'll get to this later, but the land use plan was adopted by council, which includes the future land use map that you see here with the revisions that they took at their October meeting. Oh, boy. One second. So the, the revision that I really want to talk about right now, and I'll talk about the other one later, is that there is a Roots Farm that is developing into this kind of mixed-use and large open area space, and they own some of the property that was in our annexation area. And so Lisa came to our, you know, town hall basically to ask us if we can carve this area out of our annexation area so that Roots Farm, which, no, the main property is in Weddington. It's not just in Weddington's annexation area. It's currently in Weddington, which is here. So if we could carve that area out of our annexation boundary, then they could eventually annex into Weddington, and the whole property could be in Weddington. So the council did make that revision on the October 29th meeting, and so that's basically the topic of that. That, this has already been approved, so this is kind of mostly informational, but what is not informational is the next two things. The sphere of influence conversation, which is that at the August 6th, big county meeting of all the municipalities, the idea that, you know, we were going to present an ETJ for a kind of very small area of Marvin, which is in the dotted areas, but Weddington actually wants to see the entire regions between the municipalities be in an ETJ of one municipality or the other. And so then, the idea is we take our annexation agreement, which we would come to with Weddington very soon, and actually make that our sphere of influence and ETJ application. So the conversation here would be, would you, the planning board, be interested in taking the entire light blue area that you see here into an ETJ application? And then the other, the last thing is the joint resolution here, which I'm doing a little bit different tech today, so bear with me, but the towns, the five towns in Wuma have agreed to join this coalition called the Western Union Municipal Alliance on Wuma, and they want to have control of the areas between municipalities. That leads to joint resolution. That is in the packet, and that's what the title of this agenda item is based on. So that's, that's all I have to say about it. Does anyone have any questions? I know that was a lot.
Let me ask a, I guess a backup question regarding ETJ. I thought when that first came up, your, yeah, history on it was that the Union County Commissioners were not, have, for years or whatever, have not been interested in giving the municipalities ETJs. Is that correct?
Yeah, let me run down the history just to get everyone up to the beginning. The county commissioners were not amenable to any ETJs. And then finally, after some pressure, they, they agreed that we could fill in our donut holes as ETJs, and in our case, the areas between Marvin and the state line and some areas that are, no, they make more sense to be in ETJ where the area is bounded by Newtown Road and Marvin. But that wasn't enough for Weddington. Weddington wanted a whole area between Weddington and Marvin, a whole area between Weddington and Wesley Chapel to be in one town's ETJ or another. And I'm hearing, I really am hearing from the county planning department that county commissioners are probably not going to approve that request.
That was where I was headed, asking that. We're going to, to stump our toe on this.
Right, but you see, there is a really strong push now, now that, you know, towns have formed this coalition, and they're talking about this joint resolution, and they're also, they're also signing each other's resolutions to oppose high-density developments in the county that's adjacent, as in the county is just, our council has signed a resolution opposing a couple of other high-density developments that are kind of near Mineral Springs, and there is a rezoning request for like an apartment complex at Newtown and Providence Road in the county. And when that comes to, if that comes to the point where they're getting through the rezoning process, other towns are probably going to sign on, do a resolution opposing that as adjacent to our, right, to me. So there's a lot of desire to, by the council, to have control over the development between municipal borders.
Yep, I understand. I just didn't know whether, whether that was going to hurt our request for, you know, the first step towards ETJ or not.
Rowhead, is it important to, to talk about the structural effects of the planning, that having an ETJ would have on the planning board?
That is a good point, because ETJ members have to be proportional to the current planning board and the current population. So when we were talking about this ETJ application, the one that you see in the dotted extra, it would add about 1,000 people, and since there are seven planning board members, 7,000 people, we would add one ETJ member to 1,000 people. But if. But, um, if we take the whole annexation area into, um, consideration into the ETJ, we would have to add about seven or eight planning board members, um, that would be ETJ members. And of course, it would be up to you to decide whether those ETJ members can vote on all matters or only matters that pertain to the ETJ.
Oh, boy.
Um, but yes, um, that is one, um, consideration if you choose to support, um, councils and therefore to make this lawyer value. We would have to have about seven or eight additional planning board members.
That, that sounds like a, uh, a, a problem for, for not only our board, but multiple.
This, this would also, I think, apply to the board of adjustment, but should any, should our annexation drive be successful and incorporate, incorporate more neighborhoods? That, that proportion would go down.
Yeah, but.
But, but yeah, you, but you'd still have to appoint a number of ETJ members. They, actually, you guys don't appoint them. The county appoints the ETJ members. They select from our area.
Right, the county appoints the ETJ members.
So we don't have anything to say about it?
You only decide their jurisdiction.
Right.
Are they also keep the same way planning board members are? Because it's not, I mean, they'll have to accommodate that in the budget.
That's a good, that's a really good question, and I, and we, I honestly don't know the answer to that. Um, that's probably up for a council to decide, because that, I don't think that'd be, I don't think that's regulated, at least to my knowledge.
Was there any discussion if this happens that, uh, maybe these other municipalities would contribute to the traffic cups that we currently employ, that everybody else from all the other communities that we're talking about use? Would they contribute to that? Was there discussion on that?
We'll never get one.
Yeah, I know.
I don't know about that. We, you, we can take notes and bring it up at Wuma, though.
It's a significant cost for us, is it not? And it benefits everybody in that, every, all those other communities.
Yeah. You know, I'm just, I'm looking at the map, you know, and, you know, our quote, uh, future annex, I'll call it future annexation area is eighty, ninety percent developed already. Uh, whereas the Weddington properties, you know, expansion areas are undeveloped, a large part of it. So, you know, we're going, we're going to take a big hit as far as, you know, all of this stuff. I'm not real, that, you know, when you, when you bring it up, that part, I'm not, not real crazy about that idea myself.
It's, it's something, it's something to consider.
Yeah. I, I personally would rather go for the, for, you know, request the ETJs that we already, you know, thought we were going after to begin with.
I don't know how much, I don't.
I'm, I'm going to clear what our charge here is for this discussion. It says discuss it. What are we supposed to be deciding on or voting on?
Um, I think the, the big ask is would you support this, uh, resolution to ask the county to, um, give us a sphere of influence for, for our annexation area?
And, and, and in your, in your mind, in simple terms, how would that hurt or help Marvin to do that?
Control, have say over that area?
Yeah, we would be able to regulate any future development, um, in these areas. We would also probably have to have a little more staff capacity. I think that those, those are the big pros and cons.
So we'd be able to regulate development in those areas?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that would be the, the, the big ask to the county.
And who currently regulates it? Just the county?
Yeah, just the county.
So we would add our, we would add our layer of Marvin, like oversight to the counties on top of that?
No, no, we would have complete development, if, uh, development regulations.
Did I, did I understand you to say, though, that there would need to be seven additional members to the planning board that would be appointed by the committee?
Uh, they, yeah, I would be appointed by the county, um, but again, ETJ members can be either decided they can vote on only ETJ air, uh, matters that pertain to the ETJ, or they can vote on all matters. And I think, uh, the consensus when we were just applying for this ETJ, that's the dotted texture, that would only add one member and that you were finally allowing them to vote on all matters. But, um, I think I would highly recommend that if we were to add seven or eight planning board members that they only be allowed to vote on matters pertaining to the ETJ.
Yeah.
Well, like, again, I'm, all I'm trying to understand is that if you were to add seven members to the board that were appointed by the county, they would actually outweigh us in terms of voting over this area.
Yep. I think it would be more than seven, uh, because some of these areas are more dense than Marvin. Um, has to be proportional.
So I, I, I mean, how important we would be able to dictate development in, in these areas if we would become the minority on our own board?
Yeah.
You're still guided by, you're still guided by the land use plan and you have.
Also, the Heritage District is right up against the ETJ area, so they could also have pretty significant influence over, over what happens there.
Yeah.
So as we're, as we're stacking this up, it seems like we're having more cons than pros. Like, what, how, how does it serve benefit, how does it benefit Marvin if that's never going to be part of Marvin, if we just get involved and what's developed there? Uh, and then it's totally different people that do for what Marvin is, but somebody else does something right next to Marvin. I don't know.
I suppose in the end, the council still makes, um, decisions, um, and there's, they're not going to be ETJ council members or anything.
Okay.
Thing.
Yeah, okay, fair point.
But, yeah.
So you'd have one group recommending things in the ETJ and one things, group, this group, recommending things in Marvin and Providence?
Um, well, no, no, because you would also have, uh, votes on the matters in the day. It's not just that.
So we would have fourteen of us to walk through the items in the ETJ then?
Yeah.
That sounds incredible. The last meetings were going from three hours to twelve.
Yeah, again, but keep in mind, again, it would be our council that would have the votes, so that, that does make a big difference, right? Because they don't, the council doesn't have to accept recommendations of the full board. It can do what they perceive as in the interest of Marvin based on what they're hearing from the members of the board or Marvin.
But, but back to the, the comment of, of all of that light blue area on the map, you know, eighty-five or ninety percent of it's already developed, so what, what kind of, uh, you know, say so do we have on it? I mean, it's, you know, it's already covered in houses. There's only a handful of vacant properties that we made.
Like, honestly, I could honestly mark any maps on the building properties right now. There is like that area and this area.
You could, you could scale it.
That's already being developed. This right here is already being developed right now. And this is also being developed right now, it's a subdivision. I haven't even think there's that much left, honestly. This is, this is a church right here.
And this sounds to be like we're trying to include ourselves in a, in, in, to make a, probably a pretty bureaucratic process, even dramatically more so, to have a tiny influence maybe on a tiny little bit of area.
Yeah.
That's not in Marvin. And I, I just wonder what the benefit is Marvin citizens are governing from that.
I, I don't see it, you know, yeah. I see that it's, that it helps Weddington, perhaps. You know, it looks like, you know, one little bit of that area I see is a lot of vacant land in Weddington for future Weddington, but.
They don't have that, they don't have that large of an annexation area as we do. Is that right, Rohit? Do they have as large of an annexation area?
Um, I don't think, I don't think I've seen their side of the map, uh, their side of the annexation map yet. Um, but they're going to be talking about it in December, so I'll see then.
I think it was in the, I think it was in the documents they sent us recently, because I remember viewing it.
Anyway.
Uh, I don't get the Wuma stuff. Like, could you forward that to me also?
I think it's what Lisa sent us. I don't think it's the Wuma stuff.
Anyway.
Okay.
So I want to go back to this. Are we supposed to be making a re, a recommendation to our council as to how we feel about this? What is our charge for this tonight?
Um, I, I guess you don't have to make a recommendation now, but there is going to be a, I mean, there's going to be a public hearing on just the annexation agreement in December. And I think, uh, the ETJ conversation will continue to evolve over the next few months. So if you're not ready to make a decision, there's not a need to make a decision tonight. But the idea was, I mean, the idea was that Lisa and I would be presenting the idea, the need and the desire from both of our councils on why we're doing this. Um, in any case, I'm kind of getting the idea that maybe there needs to be more, you know, discussions on it between our, our, our planning staff and councils and, uh, come back perhaps next month and, uh, see what happens. In any case, this resolution has been signed, um, already. This is, this is the executed resolution. Um, but we'd still have to propose it to the county and we'd have to vote that as an ETJ, so, um, I don't know.
I mean, you could go talk about it a lot more, but I think you talked a lot when you drew those little circles on the map a couple minutes.
Yeah.
It just show, it just seems like we're trying to expand our voice and authority into something for no real beneficial purpose to the community, I mean.
Yeah.
But, yeah, you want to, we'll talk about it for a few more weeks, I'm fine with that, too.
But.
I mean, it seems like to do that, Mark, to further your point, we're giving up a lot, too, because then they'll have a voice on our, uh, our area.
Yeah, and we, we don't, you know, as I understand it, Rohit, we don't have to make any, you know, recommendations or anything tonight. But I think we had some, I think we had some good conversation now. I don't hear any, anyone coming up with a good reason to support that.
Well, before we table it, I mean, we actually are here to talk about stuff. I don't know when it's going to be more fresh. Like, in two weeks, suddenly we're all going to have a better perspective. I mean, we should at least take a litmus test to how we all feel. I personally, even though we're not voting, I would say, it feels like to me we're clogging up a future agenda by just saying, let's table this. We have to make a, to vet out a reason why this is positive for Marvin now, um, you know, I don't know what we're going to vet out the next three weeks, but.
Further than that, Mark, is, you know, based on the information we're receiving tonight, I think we can offer an opinion based on what we've learned. I mean, if you want that, um, I think that's good to go back to council and think, based on what we've learned tonight, here's our opinion.
Yeah.
Uh, so they, you know, we've discussed it and, you know, they know how we feel about this preliminary.
And, and I'm not sure that Rohit, or, you know, Bob is up, is on listening, uh, which is the reason he's there. So, so you can take our, our feelings back to the council when it comes back to you already, Bob.
I can do that. That's not a problem. I, I agree with what, really what everybody's saying, so, uh, I can do that.
Like I said, it is, it didn't sound too bad at first until we got, you know, into the, 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 uh, the rest of the story.
The housekeeping of it also.
Yeah, the housekeeping is, is Austin says, is it doesn't, I, I don't see any benefit to us.
So Bob, Bob, are you saying that you can go back to the council and say, generally, I got a vibe from the planning board that, you know, wasn't so favorable on this and that might be enough for you guys? And if, if maybe you'll throw it back to us in another, uh, future agenda? Is that kind of where we are?
I mean, absolutely. Um, I'm able to, just sitting here, uh, I'm in the position where when I get to listen to all of this and digest it, it, I'm so much better prepared that I can talk to the council and make, and basically stand up for, uh, your thoughts, so that's not a problem. I'm seeing the same thing you are.
Okay, well, then I think we've done a good job. We've had some good dialogue, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Instead of tabling it, I, I think we, you know, we've talked about it and we, and that's it. And if it needs to be brought up, it'll be brought up at a future meeting, but I don't think we have to table this.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah.
I like that.
All right, moving on. Update on the 2020 land use plan, Rohit. There are, there are obviously a couple of changes from when it left our table.
Yeah, um, so like I said before, the land use plan was adopted after a public hearing on November 10th. Um, there were some people that came to comment in opposition of, uh, uh, pillar center map. But we then assured that that's the monor, 2004 land use plan, as well as, you know, this is just a plan. So we assess the feasibility of everything before we do it. Nothing in the land use plan is, you know, like an actual action to go ahead. Um, but in, in any case, um, that land use plan was adopted after a few revisions. Um, nothing major, but I think the, uh, the few revisions to the future land use map was that , um, the council did accept Weddington's request to put all of Roots Farm out of our annexation area. And, uh, they did, uh, decide that the property on the corner of Bronze Grove Church and Providence, uh, should not be considered for commercial anymore. And they removed that, um, from the future land use map as possible commercial. Um, those are the two changes they made to the future land use map. There were several minor changes that they made, um, dramatically. Um, and, um, some minor content additions. Um, but they, basically, they took, you know, a couple of rounds of back and forth and pretty much agreed with everything that you, um, wanted to add. They, they agreed with, uh, um, the table of services. I think that was a pretty great addition. Um, and, uh, the adopted land use plan is in the packet. So, um, of course, um, as it says in the summary at the end, uh, a land use plan is, one, should be adapted as things change and also should be updated every five or so years. Um, like a, a full, uh, full overhaul update. So, um, you know, there's, there's a lot of, uh, issues with, you know, the process of this one that came about because we hadn't updated since 2004, but hopefully, you know, Marvin, our organization as, as a government is really in shape and, uh, I think, uh, um, you know, this looks good. This is a great plan. That's all I have to say about it. Um, there's nothing but an update in this agenda, I think, so, um, any questions?
By the way, just let you know that, yeah, council was, um, really proud of the hard work you folks have done, uh, you know, over the last couple of years. So, I mean, we went through it. There was a lot of efforts, so thank you for doing that. You made it easy for us.
Yeah, I, I echo that. Honestly, the planning board has done a really great job in that project, the survey, um, the plan itself, you know, everything that went behind it. You guys, um, were sneller the whole way through. Uh, good job.
So we get a bonus. So we, we get a bonus, year-end bonus for this, Rohit? Bob?
Bonuses for Christmas.
Oh, man, okay.
Jelly of the month club? Is that what bonus was?
Do what?
Ju- jelly of the month club?
You, you, you know Kelly is the Japanese song given.
Okay, moving forward, the recap of the previous Marvin.
Uh, you, you, you added the agenda to be discussed.
Oh, excuse me, yes. So that is, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Even though, that, that's what that line on my agenda was for.
Sure was.
Thank you. Uh, discussion of the Union County 2050 comprehensive plan.
So, just like we were updating our land use plan, which contained a comprehensive plan, Union County is also, um, doing a really big update of their comprehensive plan, uh, the 2050 plan, they're calling it. Uh, I don't have any materials to show you right now, although there are materials. Basically, this is their plan to adjust, um, to, you know, guide them for future development of all unincorporated areas. And then the reason for this agenda item to be added is that they have invited all of the planning board and, um, the council members of the municipalities to attend a, uh, virtual presentation, um, that they will be holding two of, um, and this is just for planning board members and council members and mayors of towns. Um, they're going to be hosting two of them. They're the same meeting. You can attend either one of them if you're available. Um, but, uh, they'll be on December 10th at 7:00 PM and December 11th at noon. So, um, I'll send you guys an email about it later. I just got these dates today. So, uh, if you're available, uh, to come and you want to attend and see what they're doing and ask them questions, you can feel free. Um, I'm sure our mayor and council members will also, uh, want to attend that because there are a lot of questions about areas between our towns, as I talked about before. Um, but, uh, again, that's December 10th at 7:00 PM. That's a Thursday. And then Friday, December 11th, at noon, they're both the same meeting. You can attend one or the other. And, uh, just let Austin or I know if you are thinking of going to one of them in case you do get a quorum so that you can post it. of them in case you do get a quorum, so that you can post it on those, kind of one, if there's, yeah. Um, that's all I have to say about that. Um, I don't know too much about it, um, other than it's their big plan and their, um, they've got a lot of, uh, they've got a lot of good things in that plan, but they're, they also have a few things that are, I guess, concerning to people, um, or concerned about overdevelopment in their town. So, um, that would be the opportunity to, that would be your big chance to, uh, question them about it. Uh, that's all I have to say about it. Any questions?
Okay. Recap of the Marvin Heritage District Strategic Plan Committee Meeting.
Okay, great. So in the agenda packet, I did combine this one and the next one. Obviously, we can't do that in the meeting, but basically the, the agenda, the meeting was a lot quicker than I expected it to be because the committee tabled all the items. Um, and they basically deferred, um, the parameters for this economic feasibility study to staff and DFI. Come up with, they said, you know, you guys are the experts. Um, you know, they, I gave them a survey, um, like a survey of, you know, what uses they think, the density of commercial and housing, uh, what kind of open spaces they like to see and et cetera. And they all, um, most of them filled out a survey. That's seven out of nine responses. So I took that. I've got, I got directions from them basically to synthesize the resident survey, the land use plan, and the survey I gave the committee. And DFI said, you know, we can create three scenarios and submit that to DFI and they'll plug in all three scenarios into the model. Um, so the recap of the meeting is basically that, um, they wanted to defer, you know, the actual figuring out of those parameters to us. And since we're not paying DFI to figure it out with us, it's basically just me and the county planner does volunteering on this project. So we did come up with a table of three scenarios and also, um, kind of stating that resident survey and the land use plan is obviously pretty much in support of the, the lower impact scenario three. Um, and, uh, that's all I have to say about it, other than, uh, the next agenda item is basically our, um, opportunity to actually review the parameters that, uh, we came up with before we send them, um, to DFI. Yeah, it was like an hour-long meeting. I think it was really, I mean, we did talk about it a bit, but, uh, um.
Is, is Melinda and Michael, I'm sure can, you know, that group has not gotten into the program yet, I guess. Like our conversations are here because we've had a lot of time working with each other. I think they're still trying to learn, not only themselves, you know, their group, but maybe what they're need to be doing. And so.
John, I think I felt that the committee thought that we were getting ahead of our skis a little bit, that we were going to talk about things before the recommendations were given by that DFI. And we wanted to see the recommendations first and then discuss it. So, you know, we're paying them to give us recommendations, but we were asked to comment on something that we hadn't received yet. Is that, you, you agree with that, Melinda?
Yeah, and I think too, I think that, um, my sense from the meeting the other night was that we were also potentially discussing things that had already been discussed and already been decided by the planning board or had already been voted on by the planning board or had already been, we, that we had discussed, right? And the things that were already coming out of the, um, out of the, the, the survey. And so, um, sorry guys, I'm a little on the way, but I think that, you know, we were looking at those items and I think the committee said, we don't need to discuss these again. Let's then take the information that we've already tabulated, take the direction that's already been given by the residents of Marvin, by the planning board, and then by the survey, Rohit, that you also sent to that committee. And now let's let DFI do something with it before we discuss anything else. That's really what I, that's what I took away from the meeting the other night.
And, and essentially I do have a meeting with DFI this Friday. Um, and basically we're going to workshop these scenarios a little bit before I, you know, let them loose with those parameters. Um, but, uh, the, the table in the agenda, um, is basically like, we might come up with the same, you know, outcome of the conversation here in this board, but I thought it would be a great opportunity for you guys to see, um, the parameters that I'm going to propose for each of the scenarios and provide your comments on them before I send them to DFI. That's basically where we're at right now.
Okay. So you, you've recapped those things that you're going to present to them?
Um, that's in the next agenda item.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
It's not in the, necessarily in the packet?
No, it is in the packet. It's in the, I, I come out with a memo. The, the memo's titled recap of the last meeting and parameters to send to the.
It's more like, or, 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 no, it's more like, oh, is it, is it the table, Rohit?
Yeah, yeah. The table is the table of the, the resident preferred, um, basically that was my crack at synthesizing the, uh, resident survey and the land use plan into, you know, actual quant, like a little bit quantified parameters. And then it basically led me to believe that of the three scenarios, the resident survey and the land use plan leans towards the low development scenario. But like be, I mean, be assured, even the high development scenario is still pretty low density as far as development, so, um, like setbacks, the density, it's, even the high development scenario is pretty low density. Um, but that's, that's the point, I guess, um, that maybe the low development scenario is too low development and DFI can give us some feedback on that. That's the idea, you know, by hiring DFI, we want, let's say, I'll say the council wanted to know that, before we embark on this project, that a low density downtown would be economically inclusive. That's why we have DFI.
So are we ready to move on to that agenda item? Or are we in the midst of it already?
Yeah, I get, or are we, we in it? Or is that?
Yeah, there is not really anything, um, that I, um, this agenda item would have been a lot longer if, uh, the committee, I guess, talked about these parameters. But, um, and that's, that's kind of what I anticipated when I would put the recap of the last committee meeting on every planning board agenda that you guys would get to review what they talked about, but they really just deferred it to us. So, um, we can move on.
So are we moving on to, to the inputs? Are we moving on to number seven, onto the form-based codes?
Um, inputs, that's the next agenda.
Okay, okay. We weren't sure if you already covered.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah.
So let's do that.
Okay. Great. So that, that was a little bit of a different flow than I usually normally do. I'm sorry about that, but I think I thought it made sense when I was writing this packet. Um, basically there are, here on this table, um, I think the, the last or second or last page, yeah, second or last page of the packet, um, there's one column that's resident preferred. That's not an actual scenario. It's just to show that, you know, based on some of the statistics in the resident survey and the land use plan and the current ordinances, it's pretty clear that even though I think the high development scenario is pretty low density, um, the residents definitely prefer a low development scenario where you don't even have one, you don't have one unit per acre of housing. You have point one five floor area ratio. Uh, the USHA buffer would be 85 feet, which is what it currently is along major roads, which is very large. Um, the rear buffer would be a hundred feet, which is what it is for commercial developments currently. Open spaces at 35% is like the highest I asked because I think any more than that would just pay developments on in useful. And, uh, amount of parking, again, one parking space for 200 square feet of commercial. Um, the, this is, this is a weird metric because the one parking for 200 square feet is less spaces and then one parking per 150 square feet is more spaces. Um, uh, I'll just let you guys have, if you have any questions on that metric, I'll, I'll let you ask them. But, so that's, that's just basically the rundown. So median development is kind of in the middle, um, where a point two floor area ratio is our current cloud of, um, floor area ratio for commercial zones. Um, a USHA buffer 50 feet in the front and 75 feet in the back would be pretty average. Um, and 30% open spaces is still a lot. Um, and finally, the high development scenario with 1.2 units per acre with smaller housing units. Um, the math behind that, I mean, it works out for people, you know, for concern about us increasing the residential density of Marvin. Um, well, you have 1.28 units per acre, um, but you have smaller houses. So you're overall the same increase in population as you would if you had larger houses, but fewer of them, if that makes sense. The 1.2 is kind of, 1.25 even is like the magic number. Like you either have five, four bedroom houses or four, five bedroom houses, you're still at 20 feet. Um, that's how I see it. But I pick 1.2. 1.25 floor area ratio, that's, um, that's again, kind of a height that the committee was willing to consider. I put higher options, no one chose them. Um, USHA buffer, I think this could actually be 30 feet. Um, and, you know, some of these parameters could be, you know, mixed around a little bit. Again, um, DFI will plug in all of these three parameters individually, like as different scenarios, but then they will come back to us and say, you know what, um, you didn't, none of them quite worked out, but if you adjusted this here and there a little bit, then the scenario would work out. So, you know, it's not the end all be all if we, um, you know, agree to these parameters today and then, uh, you know, something's wrong with one of the parameters and one of the parameters. Um, finally, rear buffer 50 feet, 50 feet is still a lot. Um, our current residential buffer for residential, a budding residential is 25 feet. Um, and we do have it in our land use plan in a lot of the places where, um, residential should unlock residential in these, uh, uh, Marvin Heritage District properties. Um, but 50 feet would be bigger than 25, just for the fact that, uh, these properties would probably have a little bit denser housing types than, uh, normal Marvin housing. Um, open space is 25%, that's still a lot. And one parking space for 150 on average, just make, it's just, um, it's more spaces. Um, but again, you know, I could see how equip blockability as the staff here and residents prefer, just to say that it might be preferred to have less parking and encourage more walking. Um, so finally, you know, this is the table that we came up with. Um, and this is not, you know, to say that we're going with any of these. It's just to say that, would you support, um, submitting these three scenarios to DFI for their model with the one adjustment, I think, uh, high in development, USHA buffer in the front, I think, or 130?
Paul?
So Robert, are you asking us if we support you forwarding these parameters for someone else's consideration and that we feel this is a good basis for which they're to analyze and decide?
Yes.
Okay. I agree that these look good.
Uh, Paul?
Okay, thank you.
But I understand on, on rear buffer, we're, we're saying, let's say a hundred feet, 75 feet, 50 feet. Is that the distance from the lot, the end of the lot line to the building or to, let's say, the parking space that might be behind?
So currently our rear buffers are tree buffers and nothing can go in those tree buffers except for trails and, uh, stormwater. So that would be a hundred feet between the property line and most developed uses like parking spaces or buildings or whatever. So, so you're not going to have parking lots going right up against the, the property line saying, okay, there's a hundred feet between the, the property line and then there's a hundred feet of parking in the building. No, that's not what we're talking about.
Okay. I, I, I wanted to understand that plus because I, if I remember more or less dictated that the parking needs to be behind the building. So I wanted to know.
Right, right. Yeah. So it's a hundred feet with only open spaces, trails and stormwater facilities that can go at that hundred feet and then parking and then.
So let's see now, you're going to give them one set of scenarios or three sets?
I'm going to give them all three scenarios.
Okay.
And they're going to plug all three in and they can make adjustments to any of them as they plug them into the model and stuff works or doesn't. But, uh, this is basically, there was one question that I asked on the survey, um, kind of patting myself on the back for this one because it was kind of smart. Basically, the committee members were forced to rank these six, um, categories, um, based on what they would like to see more or less. And they had to rank it from one to six. So like you had to choose whether you wanted more of this, less of this. And surprisingly, the committee like on average wanted less housing and more commercial, um, those two compared. Um, obviously less commercial overall, but they were fine with, uh, a little bit less buffers in the back and they wanted more buffers in the front. And they were leaning less parking and they were leaning a lot more open space than I thought. So it's a really good thing, I think, that we have this committee. Um, because if it was just me submitting parameters to DFI without this committee, I would have been off, um, a little bit. Based, I would have been a little off on what, uh, committee desires. So now I know. And these, uh, all three scenarios, um, kind of do hang a little bit of an average of, uh, what the committee survey came up with as well as, uh, a very heavy lean towards what the resident survey, um, desires.
I'll again say, these, these look pretty well thought out and good to me if they're supposed to be a basis for other people to really dig in and discuss and decide. If we're supposed to pick one of these three, I think we would need to dig into them way deeper, but I.
No, not.
You were asked to give some guidance of, uh, you know, of like, let's get to 500 feet so that they can talk it through and get down to the ground level. Maybe that.
Yes, exactly, exactly. So that, like I said before, I do have a meeting with them on Friday. Um, and we will workshop this a little bit more. Um, but basically there, there is a, there's a theme in these con, in these areas. Like to have 25% open space in the high density scenario, like surely you understand, like this is going to be a very low density development, no matter what, you know, we put into this model. Um, you know, 50 feet as, you know, the high development buffer, you know, you see what I'm saying? There, there is a theme here and, and DFI is going to, you know, go along with it and telling us, you know, what we need to do, um, to make it work on both fronts.
So if you.
And developers.
You obviously believe that these floor area ratios are viable for a given model.
Yeah, yeah. And I've spent, I've spent months, you know, like doing a little bit of calculus, you know, a little bit of juggling on the available land and, um, how much, uh, of the, uh, each of the parameters would be needed to fill up the space. Um, and the floor area ratios, I've talked to DFI and they're very clear on this, are just for the eligible areas for commercial. So if a property has 10 acres and we're telling it to be point two, if only the front four acres are eligible for commercial because they're within 300 feet of the main road, the point two floor area ratio is multiplied by that front four to, to give you, um, like 40,000 square feet of commercial as opposed to if they were multiplied by all 10 acres but squeezed into the front four, you know, 130,000 square foot of commercial. I think those numbers are a little off, but you get the point that, uh, the floor area ratio for the commercial is only to the eligible area, but the one unit per acre of residential is for the whole track. So you would be allowed to squeeze your, you know, 10 acres of 10 units in the back, you know, the back six acres. That's the one.
So, so DFI thinks that they'll be able to take these, you know, parameters, which they've not received yet, but the parameters that, that you give them Friday and after they get through their computations, they'll be able to tell the, the council that, you know, yeah, we think it will be economically viable or no, this is a losing proposition or something?
Um, yes. And in addition to that, they will also assess the results of their analysis and give us alternatives, um, to our parameters if, uh, if it doesn't work. Or even if it does, I think they'll give alternatives. They said they would give at least two alternatives, um, to the scenarios, um, to help them make it work better. They're looking at both, you know, the ability, they, they deal with developers a lot too, they're, they're out of the school of government, so they do a lot of, you know, working with municipalities and working with developers. Um, so they know what, uh, developers need at, at a minimum to, to even consider a development. Um, as well as, you know, working with municipalities and incorporating what they need in, in, even in areas that we wouldn't have thought of ourselves.
If, if, um, they come back and say, you know, these numbers just aren't gonna cut it, like no one's gonna wanna invest, what do we then do with that now with alternatives? It's just not viable.
Um, see, that is, uh, that is a tough, uh, you know, pill to swallow there. If we, if they come back and say the high development scenario is not feasible for developers, um, they will, there are two options, you know. We do municipal subsidies, uh, and we are doing that in, in a large way with the, uh, the MSD, the Municipal Service District where.
So what's a subsidy?
Um, basically, we would have to subsidize low density if that's what we want. If it's not feasible for developers to do outright, we would need to help them do it. Um, and the Municipal Service District, again, is not coming out of the general fund. The idea of like the Municipal Service District, we do need to extend water and sewer to these properties, we do need to build a trail so that this whole district is walkable. Um, and the idea is that we would establish a commercial rate tax on all of these properties. And then we would, um, take a loan or a bond or some other financing mechanism to borrow the next twenty or thirty or fifty years worth of those taxes and spend it now on things that the developers would otherwise have to spend upfront. And then that would be the reason why they wouldn't find it, uh, financially feasible, but, um, then those property owners would not be, you know, would only have to bear the brunt of this commercial rate tax for a few years. And then they, you know, they have tenants or, you know, buyers or whatever that buy these properties knowing that the tax rate of your house is actually thirty cents. Um, but that's after the fact, so they're, they'd refund what they and then we would collect the money that we borrowed over the next fifty years or so, thirty. They'll also, they'll also advise us on that, basically. Um, I asked them in advance that, uh, that's a big, that's a big purpose project, uh, that we need to extend water and sewer and sidewalks and streetscapes and everything. Developers aren't gonna do it, so, um, they will also be advising us on what kind of, uh, commercial tax rate we would need, um, to borrow from and like what loan period we would need, um, how much money we would need roughly, um, based on the infrastructure we would need to build.
So it sounds like if it's not viable, Marvin, Marvin is interested in pushing forward, no matter what.
Oh, no, option two is that if the high density scenario is not viable and we need to go far higher than that or have a commercial rate tax that would be, you know, unviable, then we don't do this project. We, we would have to, you know, like, well, like, relax at a low density downtown. The way we're imagining it is not, um, viable for developers to market it and just not do it.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Hmm, I don't think that's gonna be the case though. I think, uh, there is definitely an avenue for a lot of, like, at least even the, the medium development, even perhaps the low development scenario too could be viable. Um, I just don't think that it's gonna turn out at that worst case scenario, but that would be what happened today.
So, so this looks like excellent work. You're asking us, are we recommending you changing this before you submit it to them? Is that what you're asking us?
Yeah, that's correct, and, and I mean, this is, this is the synthesis of the, the resident survey, the land use plan and the committee. And I wanted to bring it back to you because the timeline just, uh, you know, it's, it's really, um, it's really kind of perfect where I have enough, uh, leverage, uh, in the timeline to bring this to you, bring, to, to have you look at the actual parameters, um, that, you know, I was able to synthesize from all these three sources um, and get your opinion on it before I submitted it to you. So yes, I'm asking you if you would support, uh, these three scenarios.
I don't know if you're just calling us or if we're taking your vote, but I, I think this looked like good thorough work and I would support you forwarding it up to, uh, for further consideration to the next group, myself.
Do we?
Thanks.
We need a vote or just a hands up?
Um, yeah, you wanna make a motion on that, um?
I, I would like to motion on that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, a second.
What is the motion on the table, just, just for the record?
Um, to submit the three scenarios to DFI, um, as, I, that one amendment is I do wanna change the high development front buffer to thirty feet, it says forty now, but I keep thinking about it, I think thirty is a better number.
So the motion is to submit the three scenarios to DFI as amended?
Yeah.
And did I hear a second?
Should, should we actually outline what those three parameters are?
Um, you could, you could probably attach the, the memo.
Okay.
Motion.
That's fine.
Long, long, that would be very long.
That'd be very.
I get it, but you know, let's attach what those parameters are to the motion instead of just for future reference.
Don't be in the minutes.
That's a good point.
My motion was based on this spreadsheet that is in the packet, right? Like that's.
Yeah.
I'm a lot moving that we adopt that with the thirty foot, uh, just change for the high development scenario that rule I had to just, going to grow it to just, sorry.
Um, thank you.
Seth?
Thank you.
Was that a sec, a count or?
Yeah, that was Ken.
Okay, all right, all in favor? All right, motion carries.
Is that unanimous?
Um, like I said, we're gonna workshop this a little more with DFI, they're gonna tell me if I'm being ridiculous or that they work out, but again, do some balancing to make sure that they would work out. Um, so.
Robert, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, sure.
I have a hard time with like the point two floor ratio kind of stuff, I'm, I'm very visual. So is there a, is there something online that I can look at just so I know, like, comparable, like this is more like a, you know, Trader Joe's, this is more like a clothing boutique, like I, I need to be able to reference something?
Robert, I think if you, if, if, if I could, I think what you could do is like a one acre parcel would allow four houses, that, that, that's.
Right, I'm gonna do it like that because floor area ratio is a density, um, not a size. So I would have to say, if you take a one acre parcel or a ten acre parcel and, um, and one acres would fit ten thousand or eight thousand square feet of commercial, um, and eight thousand square feet is like, um.
Well, I got that because I can just, housing is, you know what I mean, there are houses that are eight thousand square feet.
Right, eight thousand square feet.
We're talking commercial though, aren't we, Rohit, we're talking commercial on the, on the.
Right, we, we are, but, um, when you, when you think about.
Just put it right.
Yeah, we're, yeah.
So it's about, precision of commercial usually goes by width, not height.
It's still, it's still the same, you have two stories, then the square footage counts, uh, you know, first floor, second floor.
Kelly, you're.
You can only speak, you have one story retail uses, you're, the, the two story retail uses, so, you know, an eight thou, like a ten thousand square foot building would be the Dollar Tree on five twenty-one, and that's a ten thousand square foot building. Just for, and that's.
That, that's helpful, Mike, and, and, I mean, I have a warehouse that's, you know, nine thousand square feet, so like that, that's profitable, the ratio, so.
Or, or you.
Yeah.
Your five acre parcel in, uh, in metal arc would allow forty-two thousand square foot building, which is publics?
Probably forty-two thousand square foot building, but probably several that sum up to that.
Yeah, but I mean.
There's no desire to have more than one building that had twenty thousand.
Yeah, but I mean, given her, you know, she said she needed some visual, you know, which is, that would be the max on your five acre parcel in metal arc.
It's a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot, but I mean, you're talking about, so forty, forty, something, forty thousand square feet would be, you know, ten houses worth of commercial and it would be spread out, you know, all summer.
Yeah.
Are, are, and are we talking, you know, to Mike's point, are we talking about one story buildings or two story buildings or is it just?
There are homes on the table, uh, both are on the table and, uh, like, DFI really wants to, you know, push for at least some upper story office uses. Um, even though like, uh, Michael was saying, second floor retail is kind of in the past. Um, but, uh, there is, uh, there is a desire for, you know, there are a lot of people working from home. We saw in the, uh, resident survey that a plurality of Marvin has a break from home. I'm sure that there would, if there was second floor office spaces that you could rent out or, um, even just have like a, like a law office or, you know, animation studio or something. Um, that they would be sold out on the second if, uh, that was made available, um, but probably not retail. On the check.
Roh, Rohit, let me ask a question then, if you had, um, if you had, uh, on an acre of land, an eight thousand square foot commercial building on the bottom and then you would double that, have eight thousand square feet of offices on the second floor, that's sixteen thousand feet?
Yeah, sixteen thousand.
Or are you saying then you could just have four thousand squared of real commercial on one floor and four thousand on the second floor?
Yeah, that's what I would say, um, but in any case, if you kind of design the building like a house, there might actually be less square footage on the second floor than the first floor, so we're talking something like maybe five thousand or six thousand square foot on the bottom and then two thousand or three thousand on the second floor.
I mean, it almost feels like if you go to, if you go to stories in a responsible way, you have a, a smaller footprint.
Yeah, that's the idea.
Okay, cool.
All right. Uh, can we move forward? Introduction to Form-Based Code and Potential for Its Use in Marvin Heritage District Zoning.
Um, so this is an idea that I've gotten from, you know, a lot of people have been telling me, this, this, this district would be a great candidate for Form-Based Code. Um, although I do think there is a desire to control the density and uses, Form-Based Code is a different type of zoning where instead of regulating the density and the uses, you instead regulate the architecture, the setbacks and, um, let the density just solve itself in a way. Um, and so this, this discussion, I really don't really wanna talk about it as much as I want to just tell you guys that Form-Based Code exists. And, um, you know, to invite you guys, you know, here's the website. Now, this is the difference between Form-Based Code, but there is also traditional mixed use zoning, which is what we would have been considering up to this point and, um, you know, it's still an option on the table. Um, and just, uh, ask you guys if you could look at, you know, do some research and look at the differences between mixed use zoning and Form-Based Code and tell me maybe at next meeting if you want to consider a Form-Based Code or just go ahead with, uh, traditional mixed use.
Rohit, you know, let me, let me start, I, you know, I, I clicked on that link that you provided, uh, in your, I guess, the email or, or, or the agenda package or whatever. Uh, and then I went from it, I tried, I didn't get a whole lot out of it first, and then I clicked on the one that was attached from, uh, California, that they thought was great. Uh, started, it was, it developed, it started with an E, I can't remember now. But first off, it was two hundred and fifty-six pages. And I said, wow, that's quite a, uh, uh, an ordinance. And trying to flip through it, basically, to me, sort of read like our land use plan versus a zoning ordinance. Did I miss something there?
Um, no, I think, uh, I mean, I think you really nailed it, there was, there was a concept in Form-Based Code, it is still regulation, um, it is a zoning district. Um, but it really talks about the character and feel of the streetscape, the architecture, um, as opposed to, um, being more text based where in our current zoning ordinance, you have a list of rules and, you know, some of them are density rules, some of them are, um, you know, a list of uses. In a, in a Form-Based Code, you regulate the building and whatever goes in it, goes in it. Of course, we still regulate the commercial uses that, you know, don't wanna see this type of commercial use, you can still do that. But, um, like whether it's commercial or residential, it's not the concern of Form-Based Code.
Yeah, yeah, what I saw, I didn't see how, how we make it work, but, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm just, I'm actually, if, if you, if you wanna ask my opinion, I'm really leaning towards not doing a Form-Based Code because we have a model for a mixed use development already and we have good, you know, commercial zoning that we can draw from and adapt. Um, Form-Based Code would be a complete overhaul of anything that we have currently, um.
Who's bringing it forward for consideration? Why did it make the agenda?
Um.
Could, I, I can tell by the way you've written in your words that you're not a big fan, but who is? Why is it here before us?
Um, I'll just say that I, I, I've talked to a bunch of people, you know, to, to discuss and study this district. I can't, I've lost my analogy, people have told me that this would be a great candidate for Form-Based Code, but, um, I just, I guess, I think if you guys think it's a good idea, and you look into this website and you think it really is a good idea, then I can go forward with it, but it's definitely something new and, um, I guess I'm a little apprehensive about it, that's why I wanted to bring it up to you guys first.
Well, it doesn't look, feel like it allows enough opportunity for us to nitpick things.
Is it?
Yeah. I saw a bunch of hands raised at the same time, I think I saw Michael's first.
Let's see.
Rohit, I mean, potentially, I think Marvin Gardens was Form-Based Code. I mean, we told them exactly what the building was supposed to look like, we told them exactly how many pumps they were allowed, we told them exactly. I mean, what we actually did there is a form, Form-Based Code, I mean, we're more visual. I mean, that, what we've seen in Marvin Gardens, I think, is Form-Based Code. I mean, you can, and I, I, I'm disappointed that you're, you're not a fan of it because especially in the district where we are uh, so structured, we're so, we're so apprehensive about allowing development in our town that Form-Based Code sets a precedent from the beginning that this is the type of building, this is the type of apartment. These are the type of, of lamps that were allowed, these are how wide the sidewalks are. I mean, that's exactly what I think, you know, we've been told by our community that if we're doing commercial development, we wanna know exactly how it looks, we, we don't wanna let the developers throw in their idea of what it will look like, all the other Charlotte shop, shopping centers we have. They're a break and you can't tell the difference, so, I mean, if anywhere needs Form-Based Code, I would think would be downtown or the Village Center.
I'm a fan of Form-Based Code, it's, um, it's just a lot of work. Um, I am getting a planning assistant, so I think, I think that it is durable. That's, I'm, I'm not saying that I'm not, I don't wanna do it because it's too much work.
We did do it.
Yeah.
I mean, Marvin Gardens is Form-Based Code.
I really do agree with that, um, Kelly?
Um, I did some research after our last meeting on Form-Based Code and it's, it's very cool, um, I really, really like the concept. But what I think is, it will be difficult to explain to the community. Um, and especially when you start talking about like Form-Based Code talks about it doesn't regulate density, and then when anyone hears density, you know, alarms go off, so, um, I, I think it's cool, but I, I'm not sure if we build it, sell it, I mean. But it doesn't help, it's about feel, it's about the kind, I mean, it's, it's, it's what design should be about, um.
Hmm.
Right, I just wanted to say that.
Hmm, you know, in a way, I mean, I agree with that too, I think, uh, the moment you say that, uh, we're going forward with a district, uh, type of zoning that doesn't regulate density, um, we're gonna have pitchforks, right? But, um, we also have our, our commercial conditional district, um, and if you look in that, um, zoning district, it's, uh, it's gone a lot of, uh, regulations on the architecture and the feel and stuff. Um, so, you know, I mean, Form-Based Code is a great idea and I think that we definitely have a lot we could draw from Form-Based Codes and from Marvin Gardens, which is, as Michael said, I think accurately, in a sense, is partially Form-Based Code. Um, it is conditional district, so I don't think it would be officially a Form-Based Code, but, um, basically, we did take, we, we have an exact drawing of a facade that we wanted to see and it's kind of really cool because that poster has been in my office since, uh, that property was, um, woods and now I can see that exact style when I drive down that street. Um, so, so I mean, in that way, Form-Based Code is really cool, you, you do get exactly what you set out from the beginning.
Wouldn't you say it's a lot more work? In what respect do you mean? When you say it's a lot more work, in what respect do you mean? And is it just you or are you talking about we have to, we, we have to create a whole book of codes and then we could then have people use the codes or where's this work coming in? How much, how much work is a lot of work in your mind?
The thing is, I'm getting, I'm getting a planning assistant, twenty hours a week for the rest of the fiscal year. So I, I think we can do it. I'm not concerned. I was concerned about the work last time, but council's really got my back. So the amount of work, I think if I can, the, the work itself is to create these diagrams. Since this is going to be a, you know, project driven by us as opposed to driven by developer, we do have to draw exactly what we want to see. We have to draw the setbacks. We have to draw the architecture, the street lamps. We have to draw all that. And it's, it's more work than a traditional district because a traditional district, you see, you've seen my draft zoning ordinance, it's just text. You can put the exact, you can put exactly what you want in text and then see it happen, but you know, you don't know what it looks like until someone builds it because you regulated to a certain extent and then, you know, what got built, you know, meets that, but you know, there's still a lot of leeway about what it could look like. So that's where, that's where the work comes in. You, you basically have to draw everything you want to see, but then it is cool because that's exactly what gets built. I'm, I'm not really, I'm not really concerned about the amount of extra work it will be. I just think, I just, when I say we have, we have the traditional types of zoning already that we can draw from in our own ordinance, I guess that is a bit of a benefit because we already know that this is an ordinance that exists. This is something that the community would, you know, we already know the community would be a bit approved of because it exists in our ordinance currently.
Is it accurate to say that form-based code would provide more visual interpretation of what might happen than, than the other, the other way that's just strictly taxes out or do you say?
Yeah.
Well, it just seems, it seems like in a sensitive situation like we have for our potential future development and how controversial it's been, seems to be like if people could visualize it better, it would, it would might go a long way in terms of bringing people together and getting on the same page before, you know, crazy amounts of resources were spent on engineering and pre-construction documents and all.
And, and since I will have the staff availability to create a form-based code, I think that, I think that's really good. I think that's a grab. I'm, I'm actually, I'm actually undecided myself. Like, I know Michael said that, he said I'm not for it, but I just, I, I don't know. Like, I don't know what would be best, but I did want to give your opinion. And another thing, the topic of density, the density isn't regulated explicitly, but you do regulate the setbacks between the buildings. And of course, when you do that, you kind of de facto regulate the density because you can only fit a certain amount of buildings in a space when you say they have to be this big and they have to have this much space between them.
Rohit.
Same with the floor area ratio, right? I mean, the.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that inherently limits how much you can do in there, but it does get overly specific about what you can do there. It allows for flexibility and evolution, which I think is important right now.
You have flexibility.
People look at different functions. I mean, to me, the ultimate responsibility we have the community is to say, hey, this looks like the community that we want to, we want to build and lead, right? I mean.
Right.
If you start getting into further specifics about what goes on inside the building exactly, I mean, that to me is a little, a little overreaching compared to what's in the best, you know, broad interest of the community.
Right.
That's just my.
You still, you still can say, and I looked at other form-based codes, you're still able to say that you don't want certain commercial use. So when we say you, you can't regulate uses, it's the commercial versus residential. Like, you can put, you know, how, if you look at the corner of Waxham or now, you have the Crane Store and Scott White's House, you could have someone living in that house as a residential house and then 10 years later, make it a commercial use and then 10 years after that, someone could live there again in a form-based code. That's, that's what I mean. It's not, of course, you can also say that there cannot be commercial in that, but you can also say that, you know, the front are not regulating whether it's commercial, residential, depending on.
Is this, is this a trend that you see development going in on a national scale?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. I see, I see it's getting more and more popular and, and flexibility is really the, the big, the big idea. Not only does it let the community see what exactly they're, they're getting built, but they also, you have the ability to flex that space depending on, you know, the market, the needs of the time and, you know, because of COVID, it's more important than ever, I would say.
I think, I think we move us to stay, you know, cutting edge. I mean, if we eventually do something like this, we're going to want to be something we're very proud of. It seems like using these kind of tools would make sense to me, but I'm, you know, I'm trying to step it down, but just by general opinion on.
Is there a way we could do a combination of form-based code, maybe along in the front areas, that area, like the main area of retail? Because I just think, I, I love the idea at the same time, though, like the back areas of commercial, like I want those protected at the same time. So, you know, they're weightless both.
I really do think there's an opportunity, because like I said, in our current commercial conditional district, there are a lot of drawings in there. And those drawings are really reflective of what you would see in a form-based code. And so I, I think there's, there's really an opportunity to take the concepts of a form-based code and put it in a traditional zoning district. In any case, the conversations that we had last time about, you know, kind of converging on the uses and type of district, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be wasted because you can do that in a form-based code too. But you can still have all uses that aren't residential be, you know, required to have a conditional use permit. So that, that conversation is kind of separate from, from this one, but yes, I think there is a way to combine the two types of regulation.
So if a vape shop wanted to move in, we could still be like, no.
Right, right. And right now, I'm working on a permit, like a, a permit form, you know, we're, we're getting the Marvin Gardens tenants that are trying to move in. And so I would look at what use they are. I would compare it to our list of allowable uses and then tell them no or yes based on what they're proposing.
Does that make sense? Thanks.
But if, if you run across one, you know, that you think is comparable to what we've, you know, what we think we want to do, and said, I'm, I've always been a plagiarist, you know, I had to read, you know, Kelly said she couldn't visualize, you know, how big a certain square footage is, I need to visualize or see someone else's code, existing code to get a better feel for what it, how it may work for us.
So, but again, if you're asking for next meeting, we come prepared with more detailed comments as to how this, the agenda items.
Yes, yes. I, I don't really want to make any decisions on which one we're going to pick right now. And I will, I, I hear what Kelly is saying and what John is saying and I will put a lot more visual examples in this next meeting's agenda packet, both of, you know, what form, like just kind of snippets of what form-based code would allow us to regulate and also, you know, in this context, what densities would equate to in terms of, you know, how much building are we building on this property?
Okay, thanks. Moving on. Discussion and Relationship Planning Board and the Marvin Heritage District Strategic Plan Committee.
Okay, so this item I think was tabled from the last meeting.
Yeah.
Because we wanted to get an idea of what the committee would do and then what the planning board would do in response. So now that we've had, well, not a full cycle, but a partial cycle, you know, looking at what the committee thought and then having the planning board reflect on it, I wanted to re-evaluate, you know, the idea that, you know, the planning board would review what came out of the committee and provide their inputs and maybe even in a more involved way than the committee itself, because it seems like the committee is, is, you know, is here to give their input because they're more broad, you know, group people of, you know, different interest groups, but not really interested in going into all sorts of detail on every topic. They will, you know, they will, I, I hope and I, I think they will still advocate for different topics that they care about and specific things that they would like to see. But it is really going to be a responsibility of the planning board to review everything that the committee comes up with and then either, not either, but both, go back to the committee and, you know, express the.
Designs.
The planning board as well as provide to the council your things on what committee did. So if that's had, I think, you know, it might be a, I think it's going to be even more clearer in December of what your relationship will be, but I think that's all I have to say about it. So is that, is that starting to make sense?
Yeah. I think it's sorting itself out some, a little bit. And, you know, still, we'll, we'll see how it goes moving forward.
Yes, there's not going to be any set exact relationship, even in the beginning or throughout. I, I definitely see that this is going to be an evolving process that we, you know, reassess the relationship, not reassess, but we, we, we will look at the relationship as, as, as the project goes along. But I, I did just want to, you know, come, come back to this topic to reassure you all that there will be a very close relationship with the planning board and the, the committee. And even the committee does value the idea of the, the resident survey and the land use planning, getting what they do. So there's definitely a lot of voice from the planning board on that committee.
Oh, I don't see any need for any further discussion at this moment. Is there anybody? Not seeing anything. Let's move action items.
Okay, I do not have much. One second. Okay, so the only things I have is Councilman Mark Leese will relay the planning board's opinion. I'm applying for an expanded ETJ to the, to the council. Rohit will provide the FIA with the proposed inputs. And Rohit, did you get direction on form-based code?
No, there's no direction on that. I, I definitely see a warmness of, of the planning board to contribute. And like I said, if I do like form-based code, I think it's just difficult to understand. It's difficult stuff, but the direction is basically for me to create a lot more visual examples and, and kind of more contextualized examples to our project here and put it in the next agenda packet.
More visual examples of what a form-based code would look like? Is that what you're saying?
Right. What form-based code looks like and what regulates and how it would be like a preliminary way of how it would be applied, like how densities would look like, you know. I can, I can do some mockup between now and the next meeting and put it in the packet.
Okay. That's the only three things I have unless, unless anybody else caught anything?
Yeah, I have one more thing. If any of the planning board members are interested in attending that county Q and A session for their 2050 comp plan, please do let Austin and I know, mostly Austin, so he can keep track of whether there may be a forum at either of those two meetings.
Yes, please note, please notify me.
Austin, I'm notifying you.
Kelly.
I don't want to email you. I'm just going to go into the one on Thursday at seven, the 10th maybe?
Kelly, 10th, okay. Anybody else, anybody else confirm that they're going to go to this?
I'm going to be sending out a email with the go-to meeting links. I just got those today, so that's why I haven't sent it out to you guys yet. I already sent it out to council though, but it's a different time for me. Since the planning board meeting was today, I figured I would talk about it and then send it out. So you guys aren't just receiving something you've never heard of right before a meeting that's not on the agenda for them. You know what I'm saying?
Okay. Board member comments. Understart at the top of the screen. Melinda? Nothing?
No, no comments. Thank you.
Kelly?
I'm good.
Paul?
Have a good Thanksgiving, everybody. Stay safe, be healthy. See you next one.
All right, Kent?
Uh, nothing for me.
Mark?
Yeah, wish everybody a great Thanksgiving. I do apologize for missing the last media announcement. I was, I'm professional. I do apologize.
All right. Let me wrap up with a comment that I will very likely not be in attendance at the next meeting. I may or may not, but I don't think. On December 8th, I'm scheduled for a do-over surgery on my knee. So Kelly, please schedule that you're probably going to be, you know, in charge then. The, you know, the doctor says he thinks it will be much easier than the first time, so I may, may be around, but just everybody be prepared.
Should be hopped up on drugs and, you know, maybe not. Maybe whatever. It'd be a crazy meeting. I remember when she said, guys, maybe we should just be like, go, John.
Yeah. Also typically Rohit and Austin and I have a pre-meeting the week before, which.
Usually the previous Monday or Tuesday.
Monday, which is, would be the first. Or the two, or actually that would be November 30th. I would probably have to be.
The planning board meeting is December 15th, so we're looking at like December 7th or eight.
Seven, all right. So that would be, excuse me, I was looking at the wrong thing.
When are you having surgery?
Uh, on the 8th.
Okay.
So.
All right, I'm actually, well, it depends on when you want to have it. I'm not up for the evening. I'm going to be on the 8th. But, you know, we can, we can talk about this later. Could you?
I don't know what I'll be. So, so Rohit, if you'll be the, you know, the leader there and, you know, with Kelly and I may or may not be available. That's all I'm saying. And the same thing holds for the Union County 2050 virtual plan. I don't, I just don't know what I'll be like.
Well, we hope it goes well, John, not bad.
You what?
We hope it goes well.
Yeah, I do too. Thanks. But anyway, that's really all I've got. Just sort of giving everybody a heads up.
Call on council for his comments.
You got it. You got everybody.
Uh, nothing else. Motion to adjourn.
At 8:20 PM?
At eight.
So moved.
All right.
Who said that?
Mark. Second, Kelly. All in favor? Good, we're done.